For our work session, we have two items that we wanted to discuss. First of which is you've got CSO Angelo Waggoner present, who is going to give an update to our community service officer code compliance enforcement efforts that have been going on the last several months. Just kind of a reminder of when you guys set this up, your overall strategies were to audit the comprehensive plan in the town codes, select and train the CSO, do some public presentations and reports, and then respond to complaints. I can say that we have accomplished the selection and ongoing training of the CSO, and we've been working on addressing complaints that have come in. And I think that's one of the items that CSO Waggoner is going to talk about. And so at this point, I will turn it over to CSO Waggoner.
Good evening.
How are you guys doing?
Good.
Good. How are you?
Good. So I'm up here today, I'm just gonna kinda go over a lot of the things that we've been doing with the program itself. So a little bit about myself. I did spend a few months working with the Community Development Department alongside Nicole herself, kinda building the position up from the ground, trying to figure out how to read and understand code, how to, you know, implement violations and compliance, how to be viewed as a resource for the community for education through code. I mean, code is very tricky, it's very, you know, sometimes you get lost in it, you don't really understand it. I've been trying to work to be that sense of, hey, you know, what does this mean? And explain that in a good and understandable way to the public. I'm now working with the Silt Police Department, and this alone has helped me recognize code violations. The FTO program that I'm in now has allowed me to be on patrol and respond to certain calls with an officer of the Silt Police Department. And as I'm patrolling the streets of Silt, I have realized, you know, hey, that looks unusual, or hey, that looks, you know, out of the ordinary. It's helped a lot with the visual of, you know, hey, I recognize that, that doesn't look right, let me, you know, try to address that. As well as talking to community members, there's been plenty of times where we've been out doing, you know, lunch or speaking to people, and I get asked questions on my own, and it's helped a lot to be that, like I said, that education for the public. As well as being the face of positivity for the public. I know a lot of people have, you know, their hard times and their hard days, and I try my hardest to just keep a smile on my face and, you know, let everybody know that, you know, you know, we got it, you know, like, we can figure this out, I will help you and I will do my best to, we can figure this out and we'll get through it together. While working with the Community Development Department, some of the things I have completed with the help of department heads and department members, I've addressed five carports, plethora of chicken licenses, trash and rubbish, postage of signs, construction without a permit, fence without permits, just a lot of all-around code violations. And it has taught me, again, to find, address, and realize, eh, is that a violation? Is that not, you know, kinda figure that out. As well as, I did help and coach some of the recreational sports that was put on. I'm trying to get myself out there and deep into the community and get my name out there.
Nice.
I'm now with the Silt Police Department. I, some of the things that I've been working on, which still working on, and/or completed, multiple follow-ups, multiple citizen assists. I get people to come in and just have questions or can, can, complaint-based. I do my best to figure that out, and if I don't, then I can always turn to somebody in the department, and they're always there, willing to help me out as well. Animal pets, I've done my best to catch it and see it. I know dogs in the park have been a very big one, so I have made it a point through my day-to-day shift to get up at the parks, try to make myself like that presence in the park that, hey, you know, I'm here, I'm driving around, I do see this. As well as parking complaints too, we get a lot of people who, you know, have parking complaints. He's parked here, she's parked here, this sign says no parking, things like that. And we definitely address it as soon as possible, as soon as we have time to. I'm out there trying to talk to people or, you know, address violations. And the list with the police department is growing by the day, it's growing pretty quick. Here, I have a few photos of before and after with some of our bigger code issues. This lot here had trash and vehicles that were sheltered or unsheltered with building materials, trailers that were expired, vehicles with expired registration. As you can see here, it was a very big and problematic thing. And then if you would go here to the after part of it, this is the compliance that we had after. Was, the property owner was a very nice man, he did have his concerns, but again, you know, I did try to work with him, I tried to talk to him, and we tried to get things figured out. This next one was also a pretty big case of ours. Very big amount of trash on the property upwards. There's a lot of clothes, trash, mixed in with their child's toys and pallets of wood and things of that nature. And while working with the property owner, we did get the trash removed. We are in the process of creating a consistent, equal procedure for the members of the public, so it doesn't seem like we're just, you know, we're picking on this and this doesn't seem... It seems clean to us, but the neighbors don't think it's clean. What do we base it off of? We're still trying to, you know, implement that procedure of what's, you know, equal and consistent. This next one here, it had a trailer that was being occupied. Or here, sorry, that, getting ahead of myself. Here are some of the after of that property, with the trash being picked up off of the porch and in the yard, things were getting picked up in. I am still working with the property owner on this one. And this next one, a trailer was being occupied on the property with electrical cords being ran through the house, trash on the outside of the house, things of that nature. And while speaking with the property owner, it was very helpful, very willing to work with me as well as I was working, willing to work with him, we had got this issue into compliance. And this next one here was the same thing again, a trailer was being occupied, was a lot of trash around it. Gas and electricity was hooked up to it as well. And again, while speaking to the occupant of the recreational vehicle as well as the property owner, they were both very willing to work with me on the situation. And in the after photos here, we did get it figured out. And we are continuing to try to, as soon as we see something, get it addressed as soon as possible. Due to compliance in the future, as you can see, there's been multiple cases with compliances that have been met and multiple that are still in process of being met. I will do my duties as a CSO to work with the community and enhance the community's image to clean up some of these issues or concerns that the members of the public have with the community's image. I'm definitely looking forward to working with some of the community members as well as department heads and department members to get the resources for the public and just ensure that there is compliance and there is work towards that good image and that good, good... If we get into this next slide here. Okay. If we can get into this next slide here. Sorry.
Looks like there might be some...
There we go. Sounds good. Again, I am very happy to be along some of the good members of the community as well as members of the Town of Silt. Brain fart. You know, as well as department heads, department employees. I try to get myself out there and have conversations with employees in different departments that I usually wouldn't work with and, you know, create that positive relationship or basis just in case I do end up needing something in the future or they need something from me. A big thing is ensuring that the work relationships are very positive and very educational and the community. I can say, for as long as I've been hired, the community has been great. They are very helpful with me as well, they're, and I'm trying to help them out as much as I can, and I'm willing to do whatever and ask whoever, get whatever resources that I need to ensure compliance and make sure that the job does get done. I thank you all for your time, I really appreciate it.
I appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you Angela.
Yeah. I'm, you know, willing to answer any questions you guys have as well.
I mean, yeah, thanks. I mean, it's, it's a difficult job just because you have that fine line of, you don't, you know, 'cause people are unhappy 'cause you're making them do something.
Yeah.
You know, but then, you know, you don't wanna be labeled as, oh, here comes that, that evil person, you know, making me do stuff.
Yeah.
So I mean, it is, it is a very challenging job for sure, and I definitely thank you for, for doing that.
Thank you sir, I appreciate that.
You definitely have the right attitude for the job that you have in hands. It is important to have that good relationship as you want to establish. And you being out there is also a reflection of some of the focus points that we have here as a board. So I am personally very pleased to have someone like you in the team representing us and reinforcing the code for Silt. Ultimately, we all have the same goal, we want to see Silt looking nice and pretty and being safe for everyone. So we appreciate you taking on the role, and we excited to have you. And yes, if you do need anything, please reach out to your resources and reach out to us here as a board as well, and we'll be happy to, to help you do what you're doing.
Alright, thank you ma'am, I appreciate that.
You got it.
I have two quick questions. Are, are you finding any cases in, in your engagements with the citizens that they simply don't know the rules? Like it's ignorance versus malice? Oh, I didn't know I couldn't do that, that sort of thing?
That has been something that I have run into, and that kinda falls back on the education before enforcement part of the job. If you, if I come to contact you about a parking complaint, or I've realized too that some people will park and just not even think twice about where they're parking or things like that, and then when I contact, I didn't know I could do that, or I didn't know I could park there, I was completely... While I contact citizens, I do offer a printout of the Silt Municipal Code, and I'd like to explain that to people as well. Hey, you know, you didn't understand, you didn't know that.
You have like a five-inch binder of Silt Municipal?
I, I have, I do have a pretty good, yeah, I have a pretty good...
Chapter and verse, is that what we're...
Yeah, I have a pretty good stack of them. A lot of them are reoccurring things that have happened, but, you know, if, if you didn't know, you didn't know, you can help something that you didn't know. So I do try to explain that, okay, I will give you, you know, a warning this time, let's just try not to have it happen again, let's get the vehicle moved. You know, you didn't know, let me go over the municipal code with you, just so you understand it. And a lot of people have been, oh, you know, now I know that, thank you so much, like...
You can use that as a threat too, I will go through the whole codebook with you. If I have to come back here.
Yours, yeah.
Five-inch binder.
Yeah.
This better be catered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That leads into my second question. Are specifically thinking about parking and stuff, are there cases where there's maybe inadequate signage or poorly placed signage? Is there something we should be thinking about doing to reduce those, the frequency of you having to have those engagements simply by providing better information?
I will have to say, I have seen while patrolling and seen more higher areas of where people have parked and it's been more of an issue. I don't think signage is the issue, I think it's just, you know, I'm just gonna park here and leave it.
Be there five minutes.
Yeah.
And then you show up two minutes later.
No, no, no. No, but I think signage isn't a problem. There is parts in Silt that the signage could, you know, kinda be placed in a different spot. You know, trees are covering it, things like that. But I think it, it's just a lot of people don't really think about stuff like that. They don't really put too much attention to the sign here, so they're gonna go park down the street here, and don't really realize that that sign is through the whole street and not just, you know, this little section here, things like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If I can't see it, it didn't happen.
Yeah.
There'll be no fire, I'll just park in front of this hydrant, always well.
Yep, yep.
So I'm thinking of elderly's living in the community. If we are asking people to clean up their properties, do we offer any kind of assistance, resources that they can reach out to, to help them? Is there anything like that out there, by any chance?
So there is. I have been trying to figure out a procedure or something that I can hand out as a, as a resource, from a resource. If you, I have realized that there is a lot of elderly people, men and women in the community, who have just let things build up in their yard, and it's harder for them to move around and get things, you know, into compliance. I've been trying to figure out if I can get numbers to, say, like Salvation Army and things like that. I've been trying to figure out something that I can, you know, hey, I, I realize you're having a hard time getting things cleaned up. Maybe if you contact some of these people, they can come and help and, and things like that.
Maybe talk to like some of the local scout groups or something, 'cause they're looking for projects and...
Yeah, and that's the thing is, that's, that's the thing is, I haven't gotten too close to being finished, and you know, this is this, it's still in the process, but definitely thinking about getting contact information for certain groups, certain scouts, certain things like that, just to hand out from a resource, you know, hey, maybe these people would be able to help you.
Or even ideas, talk to like the high school, because like students that are getting ready to graduate, they're looking for things to pad their scholarship resumes, stuff like that would look good.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that's something...
No, you're right.
That's something that I haven't thought about, so I really appreciate that. I'll definitely look into that.
So my only question is though, now that you've moved from more community development side to the police department side, are we still taking care of the community development issues?
Yes sir. I have worked extensively with Nicole as well as my lieutenant to kinda make the transition easier while carrying the things that I learned and I, I was doing from the community development up to the police department. We have been focusing on a lot of complaints that she gets as well, that has been brought up to my attention. It's very, we work very together on a lot of things, and I think that helps out a lot.
Okay. And then what hours do you work?
So I work seven to five, Tuesday through Friday.
Okay. I'm just wondering if there's, you know, maybe a potential for maybe a late start one day for a later night? Because that's when, I mean, a lot more people, potentially the parking thing, you know?
No, of course.
People get home at six o'clock.
Yep.
And know you're not out there, so it doesn't matter if they park.
Yep.
In a certain place, or he's not gonna be out there, so we can go ahead and start working on our carport.
No, and I, I understand that too. I have realized that time off shift, about five o'clock, six o'clock-ish is when it seems that everybody has to come out. And on my personal time as well, like I'll, me leaving work, I'll see that and like, okay, like I'll see if that's something I can address tomorrow, and then I'll come back and I'm on shift and it's gone, or you know, the vehicle's moved, or things like that.
And then like, how's the, what is the complaint process? Like, so I assume you have complaints coming into two different departments technically?
Yes sir.
And do they all end up with you?
They, and eh, the complaints usually do go through departments, and then the communication is brought to my attention. I know some people will call dispatch for dogs running around town and parking complaints and things like that. And that is something that I can respond to immediately, because it does get aired through the radio that I do carry while on shift. And if complaints do come through Nicole, she is very good at letting me know right away. And if I have, as soon as I have time, we are out there trying to get things figured out.
Okay. And then I'm just gonna, there's one thing on here, the removal of an over-warted lightbulb. I'm gonna hope that was a citizen complaint and not something we were out looking for.
It was a citizen complaint. That was, I think that was one of the first cases that I had worked on while in the Community Development Department. A man came and complained that his neighbor across the street had a lightbulb that was keeping him awake at night, and he just had it on and through his window, and he put up blankets and you can still see it through his window, things like that. And then I had the owner of the light come in and say, it's not that bright. And it was he said, she said, he says, she said. And it had gotten to the point where property owner with the light was just, I'm just gonna remove it, so it's, you know, it's out of everybody's, you know, hair. I did go through code and I did see that there was a certain wattage to a light, and I had asked him like, how much is the wattage of the light you have? And it had just gotten to the point where he's like, I'm just gonna take it down and I'll leave it at that. So that's, that's what that is. Yep.
A lot of the things on here I see, I, I appreciate if we're being proactive on, but there's certain things that I, I don't think we should be proactive on.
Okay.
So I know we, we talk about covering the code, but I think there's probably things that are more important to citizens than other things, and I'm sure you're gonna learn that as you go through the, the process. But yeah, I mean, if we're tracking down people for lights, then I think we're...
No, and that was purely, yeah, that was, that was purely complaint-based. And we did have an officer drive by as well. While in the Community Development Department, again, just speaking with other officers, hey, I'm not on night shift, can you drive past the property? Maybe see if the light is too bright, see if that is, you know, just kinda get our own evidence, our own engagement with it and see what exactly it is. Had an officer drive by, he was like, it's not that bright, but I could see where he was, you know, saying that it was bright, things like that. But we have been definitely more complaint-based, and when we don't have any complaints, we're out there proactively trying to address things and notice things and log things as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I see your point, you know, with the light. But at the same time, you know, the citizens see you out there. They know you're out there, so it, there's more incentive for the citizens to clean up on their own without, you know, being told to do that. So I think just, just your presence out there is, is helping somewhat. You know, and, and, yeah, like the camper trailers, like, you know, I mean, it's, and, and I know housing is, the cost of housing is really high, but, you know, what happens if one of those catches fire? You know, and burns down a neighborhood?
Of course.
You know, then it's gonna be, you know, the town's fault for not, you know, for allowing that to happen. So it's just, it, it's all very important, I think. You know, as long as, you know, you're not, like you said, getting nitpicky.
Was it your light?
It wasn't my light. I don't believe it was. No, my lights are so dim, they don't even light up the front door, so.
So when I first looked at this, the Silt Police Department slide, it says 23 ex-assisted citizens, I thought it said arrested.
Oh no.
I was like, this dude runs a tight ship. That is severe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess my, I know, and I always ask this question. So, well, once you're trained to be an officer, what happens to your, you know, the code enforcement position?
So I believe long-term goals through CSO position is to not focus so much on what I'm going to do as an officer, but put all of my focus into the program itself now. And then moving forward with the program, if we do have somebody or another position open for another CSO, to put my efforts into training them into making that a smooth pro, a smooth transition into where we do have another CSO when I'm out of, you know, the CSO position.
Got you. Alright, well, thank you.
Of course.
So, yeah, I mean...
We all tried to talk about that, that this is kind of a segue into being a, a police officer, about how to, you know, but eventually, I mean, if that's your intentions, then wonderful. If it's the next person's intention that they want to be a CSO, then, then great.
Of course.
I don't think there's anything wrong with having that opportunity to, to move somewhere else. I don't, I mean, whether it's to CSO to public work, CSO to a police officer, whatever, I think it's kind of a, a nice way to bring people into work for the town, and then what they do after that can be beneficial no matter what, so.
I always tell my team you can move up as soon as you find your replacement.
Yeah. And, and it's, it helps too, having conversation with a lot of my fellow officers as well, just people that are in the PDE, night shift, day shift. And it's really brought my attention to, I need to focus on this now and really focus on CSO instead of getting ahead of myself for the future. So then I have all time and energy while I'm at work to just put into the CSO position. When we do start the transition or we do get another CSO, then I am able to, like, you know, put all that time and effort into training them to be all hands-in through CSO as well. So I think conversation and with community members as well as department heads and department members has been very helpful for the job.
And that's several years away.
Yeah.
No, it's, yeah, several years, yes.
Several years, yeah, I know, yeah.
Does it say that in your contract?
I might have to repeat...
Eight-year minimum.
Yeah.
And I guess that my other thing would be, this is a, a brand-new position to the town.
It is.
Never had it before, so is there something you are lacking that you need from?
I think a big thing is just trying to figure out what to implement into my day-to-day. If it's better organization, then I need to figure out what I need to do to better organize myself. If it's better communication with people, I've done a lot of work, especially starting with community development. It's helped with my communication with the public. Again, I can always improve on it. I like to always try to improve on communication or organization or body language, things of that nature, just always trying to improve. Not so much that I need things from, you know, department heads or things like that. It's just more what I can implement for myself in the position.
Nice.
But he is thorough. I mean, I mean, he, he, he added, he didn't have to put the light in there, but he did. So I mean, it, it, it shows that he is detail-oriented, thorough and all that, so.
Yeah. And then as department heads, called Chief Lieutenant, is there anything that you could see that we could do to help this position? 'Cause you guys probably have a different, a different vision on it than, than he does himself, so.
Right now, this is a really new program to the town, and we're working the kinks out of it. So I'm, I don't know anything right now, Lieutenant. So, but not to say, no, as we get farther down the road. But he is currently still in training, and once he comes, goes out on his own, his schedule will be adjusted. Hit most high-profile times, so different days.
Okay.
Kind of talk with people. He just recently finished his certified VIN inspection, so he can, the town can now do certified VINS. Just have to fill out the paperwork and get it sent in, I guess, is the way it works.
Oh, nice.
He has also completed, taken and completed the week-long CSO course. And I, color, no.
Castle Rock.
Castle Rock.
Yes sir.
And completed it. So his training will continue as we keep moving forward, whether it's verbal communication, written communication, or additional classes. I think we all wholeheartedly believe in this program and that believe that the town needs it. And we want to do the best job we can and give him the best tools he can to do that job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And then I just, sorry, I had one question. I didn't realize the town didn't do VIN inspections.
We do regular VINS, but when trailers, trucks, vehicles, campers show up without a VIN, it's been worn off, fallen off.
Oh, okay, okay.
Stuff like that.
Uh-huh, got you.
It takes a special class, I believe it's three days.
Yeah, it's three days.
Of learning how to do that because there's a lot on the line. You're issuing the title to a vehicle that doesn't have one. So there's a lot of responsibility there.
Thank you.
And then I think the only feedback that I really have is, since it is a new program, it's kind of been a shot in the dark, he's having to build it from the ground up, is what he doesn't know, he doesn't know. So he doesn't know, and really, none of us have a clear expectation of what you guys want to see out of a CSO program. So I think just giving a little bit of feedback there will help him guide where he's taking the program and what he's starting to implement and what kind of procedures he needs to put in place.
Yeah, I do think that is something that we, as a board, we went and said, hey, we want a CSO, but we never said, what? We want the CSO to do.
Light bulbs.
So light bulbs, okay.
I think we had conversations about things that we don't want it to be a, go out, it's not a gotcha thing necessarily. I mean, with some issues, the safety things and things like that, obviously it is. But as far as like, we don't want you out there measuring people's grass, you're not the HOA president.
No, but I understand that. Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, so I, I just, I mean, I, do you have a, do you feel like you have a clear-cut expectation on what's?
I do. I always feel like there's certain things that, if needed, can be touched on a little bit more. I, like I said, I realized dogs in the park and dogs at large have been a very big topic in the community. But that could change within a few months that they want to get... But that could change within a few months that they want to get more trash figured out and things like that. As of right now, I feel like just off of, you know, hot topics, the dogs, I'm gonna put a little bit more time into trying to figure out the dogs. Just things like that is more or less like the clear picture of it is what is most needed, what is the community need mostly right now? Like, yeah.
And I feel CSO Wagner addressed it right from the beginning. Some of the expectation is that clear communication, effective communication with the citizens and also working with the people within, you know, the Silt community as well. Being able to issue the warnings, being able to not be like of a threatening behavior, but also very educational to the point that you're heard. I think that's for me, one of the biggest expectations that I have. And there's some effectiveness that can be accomplished with that. So I would say that right off the back. As far as clearing, messy addressing trailers, those are big things for us as well. Sounds like you just went out there and you got some of those taken care of. I, I think this will continue being some of the priorities as we move forward, as well fire harm on properties as we are potentially hitting dry season. Those would be some of the things that are like on my forefront, but I think you, you are already doing most of them.
Of course. Yeah. And I know that coming up in May, June, the summer months, I know watering is a big thing as well. I, I have been, I've been waiting for, I have, again, it's like, you know what they don't know? They don't know. So I do have, and I keep magnets with me to hand out to the community. It has watering days, you know, even numbers, you know, water this day, odd numbers, water this day. I even have it in Spanish as well to hand out to the more that, to the Hispanic community, people that don't understand English and things like that.
Yeah, I think the season's kind of bringing on. I mean, snow melts, people start using the parks. There's all the, the dog poop everywhere. So, so they want it taken care of. And then now it's, it's getting warmer. I think we're gonna see more people moving into RVs just cause of the the weather's getting nicer, so they're easier to live in. The watering coming up. So I think it is always gonna change what the, the focus has to do. You know, for being a, a young gentleman, I think you, you did a very good presentation. You, you spoke very well to us tonight.
Thank you, sir.
So I appreciate that. And that makes me feel pretty confident that you're gonna do a good job out there in the field. So.
Yeah. And I, I understand you can't be everywhere where at once. And we didn't have anything specific for this position. But what you're doing is kind of what I had envisioned in, in my mind, you know, you know. And like I said, you can't be everywhere at once. I mean, I, I get it. I understand, you know, but it'll happen in time.
Well, and just to give a little bit of insight on what Angelo does, I have him in F T O quite a bit. And I can be out looking for speed, traffic, and he's out there with this little notepad writing down addresses that he wants to follow up on because they're violating CO in a certain way. So integrating both jobs and having him at the P D, he's still able to get out there as much as he can when we're out there running traffic and doing other stuff.
And that includes businesses as well, right?
Business licenses has been a hot topic just through community development and up to the police department as well. We do have a list and we are in the process of getting more businesses into compliance as well. And as businesses pop up and you know, send in applications and things like that, we do have a running list of businesses that have licenses or don't have licenses.
All mine are legit. Cause I just said so.
I like it. I don't know if you're sticking around for board conversation or not, but I was gonna wonder if the construction project in the mobile home park across the street has a permit?
No, sir. We're working on that one.
On that one? Okay. All right. I, I just didn't see one. So I didn't know if they had it hidden somewhere or not. So.
No, no, I, that was brought to my attention. I, I've got that one.
Got that one? Okay.
Yes.
Nice.
Just take the whole team over there.
It's a group effort.
Did you even tell apprehended? Welcome to apprehended.
Well, thank you very much. And I think if we have any way the program needs to change, we'll just have another meeting and figure it out.
And again, I thank you all for your time and allowing me to get up here and present this to you.
Yeah. Thank you for being here tonight.
And thank you everyone for helping him. And it sounds like he's in really amazing hands. So I would not expect anything different. You guys are awesome. Thank you.
Feel free to grab some pizza on the way out. I don't have to tell chief twice.
CSO is gonna be visiting very, very soon.
Plenty of parking in our area.
Okay. Well, up next we have the space needs discussion. I will turn this over to our administrator, interim administrator.
Okay. You, just one more comment on the CSO. Do let us know if there are any initiatives that you would like us to pay particular attention to. You know, I, I mentioned the four goals of the program. We've really accomplished two of them. We need to follow up with the auditing of the comprehensive plan and the town code. As you know that there are gaps in our town code that we need to tighten up. And as, as CSO Wagner continues, I think we'll find out more areas that we need to tighten up a little bit. So that we'll be bringing some of those back to you. But I think another important piece, and, and if you've heard me talk about code issues, it's heavy on the compliance, not on the enforcement side. So it's a big educational process. So we really need to do a much better job of doing public presentations and getting information out there of what we're looking for and, and what people need to do. And I do think that we, we do need that next step of how we can help somebody who's in need of help as opposed to just starting to write citations. I think you get a lot of folks that get too far into a, a, a yard full of junk. And it just becomes insurmountable for them to clean it up. And, and so I think we need to figure out a way to help that out. And I think a couple of good suggestions tonight. I think you may even be in a position where you could throw a community service time in there from the, the court system. But those are all things that we'll continue to work on. Moving on to the space needs discussion, this one's probably gonna be a little bit more. I'm hoping there's a, a bit more of a discussion that goes on. But in the two thousand twenty-four budget, seventy-five thousand dollars was included to undertake a minor remodeling of the town hall. And basically that includes converting the two old ambulance bays to usable office space and then reconfiguring where people are sitting in the, the other departments. This really impacts mostly the P D and community development. The police department will convert the easternmost ambulance bay to a squad room that will house workstations. It will also include an interview room, which we don't have. And then a minor reconfiguration of the existing squad room into a private office and then a document preparation area. The westernmost ambulance bay will be converted into the community development offices will include three workstations, one office for the community development director, the building inspector, and then the assistant that we have. There'll be a small waiting area. Will convert the rest of the former public works director, utilities director office into some storage. And then upstairs, if you go slide back up one page, upstairs, there'll be a, a remodeling to include a reconfiguration of some storage space for the police department as well as the creation of a break room and a meeting room that it will not only be usable by the P D, but will be usable by the, the rest of the office staff if we need to. In fact, we'd even be able to hold staff meetings in there if, if we wanted to sit more around a table rather than in the board chambers. That's generally the plan. Once community development moves out of the offices that they currently, or the space that they currently utilize, what is director Centeno's office will be converted over to some yet to be determined space for the police department, may end up being some storage. They do need an armory to store in one location weaponry and ammunition, et cetera. Or it could just become file storage, et cetera. It's yet to be determined in terms of what that would be. The rest of the community development space would then be converted to where the administrator or manager will end up sitting so that there, that individual is a little closer to where the action is happening at the the front desk and then also what's going up to community development. Also avoids having to use the, the stairwell as much as possible. One thing we will have to do for ADA compliance is we will have to put some sort of lift system in to bring people up to the community development level. The, the, the current town hall has some real challenges in terms of ADA accessibility. The, you know, the upstairs is completely inaccessible from an ADA perspective and much of the police department is as well. But with the conversion of the eastern bay, creating of an interview room and putting a lift in, we will solve the majority of our ADA, many of our ADA compliance issues. Public works and the, the field supervisor will be moved upstairs to where the administrator currently sits. And the field supervisor already has an office up there. So they'll take over that space. But that's the general plan of what we are looking to do. Joe's on vacation this week. But once he returns, we'll get him, because we've got the plans drawn up, he'll start working with an engineer from a structural standpoint because we're gonna be cutting some load-bearing walls to make sure that we'll be able to do that. We have some exits that we have to make sure we're compliant with. We'll be adding a fair number of windows on the western wall for daylighting. So we have to run that through, but then the next step will be looking at what the price tag is. I'm, I'm pretty sure what you're looking at is gonna cost more than seventy-five thousand dollars, but I don't know that for, for certain. Much of the work would be completed by public works staff, which cuts down some of the construction costs from a, an external standpoint. But it does require us to do that, most of that work once fall hits and into the winter of two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. Does anybody have any questions on what we're planning on doing with the money that was allocated this year?
Not necessarily this year. I mean, my, I guess, concern reading through everything is you're saying this is only gonna last three to five years. So it's like, okay, how much money do you spend on something for three to five years? And do we need a long-range or long-term plan on, you know, what to do with everything, you know, in terms of, okay, do we build a new building? Do we buy, you know, try to buy the lot across the street and build, you know, like an admin building, you know, kind of like the county has? You know, they have their building and they have their admin academics. I'm just, my concern is I'm not seeing a long-range plan and I don't wanna spend, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars for, you know, three to five years and then say, oh, hey, we're out of space. We need to do something else. But I'm not opposed to what you guys are doing.
Well, let me, let me, let me see if I can maybe take you to that next level. And, and yes. Trustee Klassen does point out that this is a short-term fix for space needs. The, we have a serious space, space crunch when it comes to community development and the police department. The, you know, the remainder of the, the departments are doing okay for space. We'll, you know, with this remodel project, we would shuffle, move around the deck chairs to a certain extent and, and have a situation where we're pretty good for at least three to five years. The issue is long-term, the space that we're looking at creating for both the police department and community development doesn't necessarily address the long-term needs that both departments have identified. The police department has identified the need of about five thousand square feet. We're looking at with this addition, getting up to about twenty-two hundred square feet. Community development, depending on what they would look like long-term, was in the fifteen hundred to three thousand square foot range. We'll be putting them at about six hundred and twenty square feet. So neither department is necessarily going to be in a position where they're going to be fully covered by space from what the identified needs were. Now, we are sending Chief Kite to a conference to, that is being put on about public safety space. And part of the reasoning behind that is we need to know what some of the latest trends are in terms of what space is being used as and how it's being configured. We may find out that we don't need five thousand square feet. We might be able to do something with less than that. So I think it's important to, to garner a little information. But it also leads us down a path where we've had some basic conversations with the fire district in respect to, they are looking to replace the, the silt station. They are out of space. And so a discussion ensued about potentially being in a position where we could build a joint public safety facility. There would be some economies very possibly in terms of looking at some of the meeting space, some of the, you know, some of the break room areas, et cetera, that very, very possibly we could share instead of each having to have our own. Or we may find out that that's not the best idea. But I think the next step is to undertake a true space needs analysis for public safety to determine what they need, including citing new facilities, whether that's a joint facility or two separate facilities. I don't know the answer to that. Some of that's gonna be, you know, geographic location of what's available and what works as a long-term solution. Once that, you know, once we determine where the police department is going to go, that frees up a lot of space in the current town hall that then can be repurposed for all the operations that we have under this roof, under the town hall roof. And basically, town hall will have more than enough space at that point to house the operations that would remain if public safety moves out. The problem with our current town hall facility is there's no, there's no real way to expand the footprint. We're right away on the north side. We're right away on the east side. And we're the terrace area between the, the town hall and the library. And then on the west side, it's a Catholic church-owned property, which is not necessarily an easy action to try to get a hold of. So it puts us in a, in a, in a position where we really cannot address long-term space needs with the current footprint of the town hall. But the town hall is in a building that is necessarily obsolete and needs to be abandoned. I think with, you know, once some of the operations would be moved out, you would have more than enough room that you could operate the remaining under-roof departments in town hall. And also then address the full ADA issues that are within the building to 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 make the full building usable in from a space perspective. But these are things that are all down the road. And when I said that this is probably a three to year, three to five year fix, that's what it is. And I I I certainly empathize with the thought or the comment to not spend a bunch of money that we are then just abandoning, abandoning in the future, but we don't know when that future is going to be. And so we do have needs from a space perspective that we need to address immediately. And so I think, you know, at where we are right now is we need to move forward or we're recommending to move forward with the remodeling project or at least going down the next steps. But then ultimately this summer, we're going to be looking at needing to commission a space study to really look at the the needs of the police department in particular.
Well, see, that might be something though, is it's a three to five year fix for both places maybe, but at the point when the remodel is being completed is to maybe not make it too specialized to one of you, so that way it's easily transitioned. If the police department were to move out, transition for everything else into it, so it's not so specialized, it requires a remodel to undo the remodel.
Correct. That would, that that is certainly a goal.
And that makes sense then because then we're not spending the money and just wasting it, it's just spending it and then it's still going to be used at later date.
What's the condition of this building currently? Do we have issues in the horizon? Is it a building that could last, you know, number of more years with few fixtures? Have we done any type of assessment on that?
That would be a question.
Trustee Klassen's point. No, no worries. I was just wrapping it up to trustee Klassen's point of maybe down the road be thinking about, you know, a separate additional location. Because I can recall we've had some issues in the past, so I just don't have an updated view of where we are with that. Please, Chief, Chief Kite.
That'd be a question for Joe.
Joe, okay.
He does the ins and outs of this building like no other.
Got it.
Down the trace gun. So that would definitely be a question for him.
Okay.
The overall condition and the electrical and plumbing and that type of thing.
Well, I'm sure something too is the engineer gets involved is we're looking at some of the remodel and some of that stuff that they would find some of that stuff hopefully if there's things that need to be addressed.
Once again, you don't know, you don't know.
Exactly. It's like a lot of things. You cut that wall open, you don't know for sure what's in there.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're trying to get a grant to do doors and windows in the building currently anyway. That's on tonight's agenda. I think seventy five thousand dollars is going to get us a design to do this. Splitting these spaces into much smaller office spaces is going to be wreck havoc on HVA system in this building and what it's going to take. You know, if there's not a ton of work done on that, we're gonna have one office that's ninety and the one right next door to it is going to be fifty seven degrees. Trying to divide those spaces up into little little offices. Remodels make things very tough on HVAC stuff. I think, you know, electrical load, we probably have plenty in the building. I would like to go back and talk to our, one of our past mayors. I always go back to, I believe, when I first started on the board, that he said this building had always been designed to have a second story added to it.
I've heard that too, yes.
That this is already constructed to have a complete, this footprint, second story added onto the the building. So I'd like to see if we can dig into his brain a little bit and see if he can help with some real information on that or whether it was just a
His opinion?
A fantasy, yeah. Because that would help. I mean, if if we could do a second story in this building, it it helps the farther down plan considerably. But for the space we have, you know, I our employees need to be comfortable to work.
Yeah.
So the remodel is needed, so I think we need to go down the road of seeing what it's actually going to cost. I don't think it's wasting money because I think we can use the space later on, so it's not, you know, dumping into it and then PD moves out and we've got to bulldoze everything that we we put in. I think they just become offices for other other employees at that time or whatever they need to be, so. I think it's a good path to go down. If we can do a joint building with the fire department in the future and it's financially doable for both people and a good location, I think that's a great option. The town already owns the community center lot, so bulldozing that building and building a two or three story building that houses PD and some community space could always be a potential option. I do like having PD centrally located in town. So I hate to see, you know, the fire department probably doesn't want to be right downtown. They're probably looking for something on the perimeter, probably more this way to their coverage towards rifle. So then does that push PD clear to the the edge of town?
That's true. I like the central location.
The central location is is nice. Yeah, let's see what this remodel is going to cost and make a decision.
And the the training I'm going to, it's emergency services buildings. And one of the days is you sit down, you talk with grant people. And that's one of the big draws I've seen. Like to sit down one day and look at their space needs people that are there. And then one of the days sat down and talk with the grant people and see what there is out there.
That'll be great.
Yeah. And I don't, financially, I don't know if it makes a difference or not to make this the bays ADA compliant. Could we not have a door go out the north side of the building to the ground level instead of doing a
The slope is not correct. It would take a lot to get the slope to be adequate.
Okay. All right.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can jump in, if I recall, I think Trey had tried to pull, he pulled the blueprints out and I don't believe anything showed anything to confirm that a second level could be added. But we could certainly pull those again. And just from what I've experienced during the time I've been here, our biggest, some of our biggest issues have been the HVAC system, which has been a a trouble spot for years and years, along with electrical because this building was never wired for today's technology.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, you know, with the second story, it may have just been second story in the ambulance phase, which is already done, just because originally it was all open in the ambulance phase. There never was that upstairs.
Yeah.
So that may have, I'm just guessing, that may have been the
It could have been that or he could have been trying to find work for himself, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, exactly. But yeah, I was wondering that myself, you know, if you could put the door somewhere else just to try to save redoing all that for ADA, but appears not.
It's probably going to be six, one half dozen the other way. Whether we put a lift in or a regrade.
Yeah, it's going to cost.
And if we do it from the exterior coming into the ambulance bay, we wouldn't have restroom facilities for them to utilize without going out and around, coming in, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We we put a ton of thought into that also and and that was one of the deciding factors is not having restroom facilities.
Facilities, yeah.
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 And I do know the property line is like a foot off this building. So I mean, we don't have any extra space to go west.
And maybe at some point in time, look at, you know, redesigning the building with a new facility in our current space here.
Yeah.
Just going up another story or so.
Yeah, I I think we have options depending on what, I mean, really wherever we get funding from is going to determine what we got. We learned that with the water plant. They tell you
Yeah.
how much it costs and what you have to do and you you go and do it, so.
I'm hoping to have better numbers when I come back from the seminar.
Okay. And even if not better numbers, at least a a vision. I do think going all out in the next three to five years to build a new town hall is going to sit poorly with the citizens that we raised water rates, we raised tap fees and now we're building this building for our town employees. So we're gonna have to do, anyone that's at the board at that time is gonna have to do a good job of selling that to citizens.
Plus, the sewer plant is on the heels of the water plant.
And then a sewer plant coming up, so.
Yeah, and then that's kind of why I was asking, you know, questions about the cost too, just because it's going to be tough with everything else we got going.
Do we have any numbers to compare similarly sized communities with the number of various town staff and departments that are present in those communities? Are we, I'm guessing we're under that number, but is there any way to validate those numbers? For for a population of, let's say, thirty six hundred, how many police officers do they have? How many community development employees do they have? That sort of thing. To, again, to to your point, Mr. Mayor, to try and validate the idea that while the town grows, we we need to improve and increase our facilities accordingly and that this is not out of line with what's going on more generally.
That's a really good idea. We can, we can definitely reach out to neighboring communities and anybody that's similar in size and get those numbers in comparison.
And and again, my point is not to be punitive to say, you have all you need. Be grateful. That's not it at all. Again, it's it's thinking again to communication to say, we've been understaffed, we've been undersized in order to provide these services and do these things that you as citizens want and need. We need to increase and improve our facilities and the teams that are in them to provide those services. These these things go hand in hand, but I think we need to objectively demonstrate that this is not out of line.
Exactly, because that's the thing is not just making a nicer place for them to work, but so they can do the work that they need to do for the town.
Right.
So really, it's the work, the the offices and stuff aren't for the actual employees that are in there as it is for the community, so those employees can support the community.
Yeah, we're not building a vault full of gold coins for them all to swim in.
Okay, Scrooge.
What?
What?
Scrooge McDuck.
I will also add, can we not combine the armory with file storage? Can we, can we not do that?
It would, it would be one or the other.
Let's, let's have them separated.
Make one of you, make the one safe. Until something happens.
Yeah.
No, what we're looking at is a Band-Aid. As the boss said, it's, it's a temporary fix until we can get stuff going.
And that again gets back to the validation.
And that kind of thing tomorrow, we'd still be a year or two out.
Yeah.
So what is happening today that's calling for the biggest issue as far as spacing?
I'm sorry.
What is, what is happening today that the spacing issue, it's just becoming like more and more clear? What what is the main issue that we're experiencing right now?
The town is growing, you know. Up till, you know, about the time Nicole department and that's adding on more things and it's growing and she needs more stuff to put rec equipment. Personnel. At the time, we only had one person in there and a building inspector. Now we've got two in there with hopefully a building.
Hopefully soon.
If we keep the school district, adopt the gymnasium, we can make that into a recreation, community development building and
We would take it.
That darn school district.
Throws up front. It was three of them and planned the juggling act. And now they've got additional people up there. It's, you know, Public Works, as the town grows, the rest of the departments grow. And I think we were so far, as Mr. Mayor said, we were so far behind for so long and now we're getting up to speed to where we should be. We're we're starting to feel it. It's a little more noticeable. It wasn't a gradual, here we go. It was here to here, here we are.
Yeah.
No type of thing, so I, excuse me, so I think we really need seriously to look at the expensive Band-Aid right now and give us some time to, once the PD figures out which is other than Public Works, the biggest amount of employees in one department. It will open up some urban town hall, but as Nicole said, you know, this building was wired years ago. And and I'm sure, I don't know anything about it, but I'm sure there's a struggle on the panel covering all the electronics that we're using today. You know, so it's really puts it up for, you know, discussion and a lot of thinking of what direction do we as a town want to go to.
How many desks do you even have back in the PD?
Right now, we have four back in the squad room. No, five in the squad room, one in my office, one in lieutenant's office and one in Miss Hope's office.
Five in the squad room has to be pretty tight. I haven't been in the PD for years.
Love to get, you know, give you guys a tour sometime. Just stop by and I'll take you up there and show you what we're looking at. And even if we do the Band-Aid now or within the future, we can design the wall to where we can open it up to where Nicole can, they go and take that sectional wall out, put a door there and Nicole will have that extra space in there also.
Yeah.
For storage and files and whatever else type thing.
Does this remodel give you enough desks for all of the new officers?
No.
So it's still tight?
It's still be tight. You know, right now, the the officers have had their own desks, kind of their own workspace. We've outgrown that.
Will they all have their mobile office?
I'm sorry?
Will they all have a mobile office? They all got their own squad car, I mean.
Pretty much, yeah.
There you go.
They all got heat, they got AC.
Yeah, they got pens, pencils and everything they need on that computer.
But obviously they need a space too for other stuff, so.
Yeah, just for efficiency. If you're sharing a desk with somebody and you go do work for four hours or whatever and then you have to pick everything you did up.
Yeah, no, I a hundred percent.
Somebody else can come in there. I mean, you're wasting thirty minutes picking your stuff up and thirty minutes getting your stuff back out, so.
Yeah. And and don't you guys have a small upstairs?
We do, and our evidence rooms upstairs and a storage closet. Sheila, could you pull up the upstairs real quick, please? Thank you. This is what we were proposing. The evidence vault is empty.
It's the bottom left, the black room. That's where the evidence storage is. And then the evidence processing is the tan room directly to the top.
Okay, and where are the stairs in relation to?
There's two horizontal lines at the top.
Right there.
That's the stairs going down and then they make a right turn to continue down.
Okay, is that these stairs or?
That's the stairs in the PD.
Okay, the stairs in the PD. Okay, gotcha.
Yes, that's all we have for the upstairs right now. The conference room currently is a mezzanine. It's open at the, at the bottom part, half of that, like if you take down the middle of the conference table, that's all open to both bays down below.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So that's gonna have to get closed in to make the ceiling anyways. But closing that in gives us now a floor that we could have that conference room.
Okay, yeah, because yeah, I mean, it's just storage right now anyway, the ambulance bay is pretty much, so.
But Matt Moonlights as a CAD designer, so he did all these. He designed all of these.
Okay.
Do you have the engineering stamp?
Not yet.
And it has the town engineer.
Save a lot of money if he got that.
No, he wouldn't save us any money because he'd be a lot more expensive.
Not if we're just paying PD hours, PD salary.
Has the town engineer given his input on this or?
No.
No, not yet.
Not, not as of yet. That's, that's basically our next step. We wanted to bring this to you so that you understood what we were looking at.
And we're open for suggestions also. If you all see something up there that could move something around or do something differently, more than happy to get everyone's input because this is a full, full court team press, team effort on this.
Provide exceptional service to some rich person that wants to pay you back by building us a new building.
Yeah. There you go.
That's it.
No, I think it's a a great concept. I think the plans are are laid out well, so great job on on getting those put together. And yeah, I just, it's all about, let's see what the dollar is coming at. And yeah, I just, it's all about, let's see what the dollar's coming at.
Go learn a lot about grants.
Should we tap into sustainable strategies? I know this isn't their forte, but they know a lot about grants.
Once we get to a point that point.
Yeah, when we get to such a point, it may be worth reaching out to Deborah, and at least if she doesn't know, who do you know that may know? She probably has a big rolodex. She definitely does, not probably.
And I'm not exactly sure where everybody's thoughts and, or what this is, but we've also got the town center. The only thing I think gets used consistently is senior meals. You know, gets rented every once in a while, but we, we've got a lot of space there also.
That's a good thought.
As an option.
Yep.
You know, something to, you know, think about as we're going through this. Yeah.
At least you're already on the ground. It's a big
Yeah, we on the ground, and I'd, I'd be of the opinion scrape that and start over. The town center.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to, that building has problems, we already know. The floor's already been leveled.
I was not aware of any of that, but
Yeah, the one back corner of the library sunk a foot or so, and has.
Oh, I just know there's a smell. When you walk in, there's a smell.
There's a lot of groundwater underneath there, I think, so it wasn't properly designed.
But as an interim solution to potentially offset some of the shorter-term costs, while the longer-term strategy, whether it involve fire, PD, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
It may, we may be wise to suffer in the short term.
Yeah.
Suffer less than the long term.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if we get to the point where we need that space, I think it's definitely, I don't think it's a, a good police department building.
No, I like, yeah, like, like community development, it could be office space for like Public Works. Because, I mean, they, they don't have to be in this building as much, because people don't come and see Public Works as much. Front-facing, whereas community development, some police department, that stuff, it's nice to have it central.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Their town manager, their own building. But it smells bad, so they're encouraged to go to meetings.
But both Lieutenant Gronbeck and I, we both believe that we shouldn't be separated from the town hall that far. If one to scrape and build over there, great. If we wanted to do the trailer park across the street, awesome. But it should be where, because we're always up front, or talk with the town manager, talk with Sheila or accounting or zoning and planning, or rec, or whatever else, we're constantly down front going back and forth.
Well, it's also nice, I'm sure, for the, all the office staff and community development, it makes it easier to have some of those tough conversations when you have support nearby.
Yeah, it makes it a lot easier for us to collaborate and work as a team if we're close.
Zoom.
Yeah, that, that's good information to know. Yeah, that's something we've, we've discussed, LT and I have discussed, and we're completely on board with being within close proximity. Because we do, we work, we interact with each other all the time. We're good size, but we're still a small town.
But still a small town, yeah.
And yeah, I mean, things are more efficient being all in the same building, so you're not having to run across town or
Yeah.
It's convenient for citizens as well, right? They can, Mark can come in and it may be comm dev one day, it may be the front desk, it may be PD, but it's all, you know, it's a campus model. Even if they're not the same building, they're close enough.
Yep.
Okay. I think everyone has a little bit of direction.
Yeah. And I guess, yeah, has anybody reached out recently on trying to acquire some of the church property? Because I know years ago, it was tried and they said no. I just didn't know if anybody's tried it recently.
I believe that Jeff reached out a handful of months ago when we very first started talking about this.
Uh huh.
And he wasn't making very good headway.
All right, I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't
I think knowing, knowing what's happening with the fire department will be very helpful in terms of strategic planning. Where are they going to be in five, ten, fifteen years? That's going to help us address where we need to be.
Yeah.
Because to your point, Mr. Mayor, if they're at the far western edge of town,
Then the PD doesn't want to go.
That makes cohabitating that space undoable in a lot of ways. But let them know that while they're planning and say, hey, if we want to have that campus model and have those services there, it, it can't be five miles out.
And I will be going to the seminar with Fire Chief Lee and one of his other chiefs. Because we're looking at it as a joint effort. Yeah, go in there, see what space needs people say, we'll see what the grant people say. You know, when it comes down to it, money.
And there may be a benefit financially to having a space that has fire and emergency services and police all in one space. That could be a huge savings. One bigger, more expensive building, instead of three slightly smaller, nearly as expensive buildings.
So when I get back, I'll pass along the information that I found out. Mac, you help us get a little more direction on which way we want to go.
That'd be great.
Okay, sounds good. Want to take?
Actually, a ten-minute break?
You actually, yeah.
Are there any other items that?
Not for the work session.
Not for the work session, okay. Yeah, we'll take a little ten, twelve-minute break here and start the meeting at seven. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.